Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, as the hour is 7 o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respected town staff with us this evening, guests here this evening, and good evening to everybody watching from home. Happy New Year to everybody. And welcome to the town of Exeter. I'm not sure if you're in the room. The record is down to five minutes. It's in the clock.
It's gonna happen.
And of course, happy, friendly, sweet life. It's pretty wonderful. Good evening.
Happy New Year.
And to my right, Vice Chair, so welcome all in town.
I have a one happy New Year.
Clerk, so welcome to the building.
Good evening.
He's unable to.
You guys can proceed if you want. Not recording anything, so I'll work on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to halt because we don't have our recording secretary.
All right, it's all good now.
You're good? Okay.
I just push a button.
So for the record, for our recording secretary, introduced the board. All five board members are here and present. Also with us, our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy. Our Town Manager is with us via Zoom this evening. He is unable to be present. Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
And Mr. Dean, you're unable to be here in person this evening?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you hear me now?
You're very faint on the volume. I don't know if that's a problem on my end or at the town office.
Well, let's look.
I think that's on his end. There must be like a TV or something.
Russ, do you have a TV on in the back? Bob thinks it's you.
I'm hearing inappropriate words on the audience.
Oh, that's not good.
Can you text him? Because he can't hear. Can't hear him, but we can hear.
Russ, can you hear me?
Blink twice. I don't think you can hear.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Uh, it's a little spotty, but I will do my best.
Ask him about.
Can you ask him to turn the TV off, Melissa, if you're texting? Okay. We need to know if he's in the room.
He's looking at his phone.
He's the only one on. Can you, just so we can move on with the meeting, Melissa, would you please ask him to tell us whether or not he's alone in the room?
Yes.
Please.
They were staying. It was picking up.
I don't know if you can hear him.
Yeah, I can do that.
Is he talking to us?
No.
He's probably talking to someone else.
How was that, folks?
We can hear you, Russ. Can you hear us?
You can also just go on mute.
But not before you tell us who's in the room with you?
You're right. Well, okay, now. This is like day one.
Let's give it a shot.
I know you are.
Thank you, Melissa.
Just without Joanna here, we can't.
I said, quick meeting.
I know. It's because I cursed it. I cursed it.
It's the lovey dilemma.
Yeah.
All right, I am alone in the room, and it is not reasonably practical for me to be there at the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Now, if you could just mute? I'm gonna, okay, he's muted. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience as we worked out our first Zoom call with the Town Manager in two years. I'll open up the opportunity for public comment. There's no members of the public here this evening, and nobody online, so we'll move on. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening, so at this point, I would ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions to the regular meeting minutes of December 19th, 2022. And then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of December 19th, 2022.
Don't move.
Motion?
Second.
A motion by Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, seconded by Selectwoman Belanger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. There are no appointments this evening, so we'll jump right into our discussion items. And first off this evening, we're very happy to have back with us PEA Principal Bill Rosson. Nice to have you back, Principal Rosson. Please come on up and give us the state of affairs of PEA.
State of the academy report. Well, first, thank you for having me, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board. I'm always pleased to come and share what's new with the academy and also hear a little bit about what's new in the town. When I've come most recently, it's been to talk about our response to the COVID epidemic. And I thought I would take a step back tonight and just take a couple minutes to say a little bit about the academy and our relationship with the town, because it's very important. So I'll take just a couple minutes to do that, and then update you on how we're doing with the epidemic. Much better. And also, we have some important construction projects that you may already know about, but the town, I should share a little bit about that. In terms of Exeter, something that I think many people don't know is that it was founded as a free school. So it opened in 1781, which is after the Declaration of Independence, before the US Constitution, so actually older than our current form of government. And it started as a free school. It was an all-boys school. Basically, if you could, well, it wasn't as inclusive as it is today, for sure, but it had a sense of socioeconomic diversity for the beginning, which is part of the identity of the school today. Today, we are 1,078 students. 210 reside in or around the Town of Exeter as day students, and 868 are boarders. They come from around the world, almost 40 countries, almost every state, about equally divided between boys and girls. Almost half receive financial aid. I was a student. I graduated in 1978, came from Long Island, where my father was a school teacher, and was a financial aid student. It became coeducational in my senior year, 771. The key moments in the history of our school might be thought of as when it was founded, when we adopted our current pedagogy, the Harkness system, in the '30s, and when we became coeducational in 7071, which really opened our eyes, I think, to many other ways that we could become a better school and a more diverse, inclusive school. Our mission is to unite goodness and knowledge, and inspire youth from every quarter to lead purposeful lives. So that's a little bit about the academy. Also, parenthetically, a little bit about me, and I feel very fortunate to be part of Phillips Exeter and its mission. I also feel very fortunate to be part of this town. It was a great blessing for the school that John Elizabeth Phillips chose to found their school in this town, and I just wanted to express our appreciation for the support we received from the town, from the police, from fire, and other town services, that you invite me to your meetings and want to hear about the school. We always want to be strong contributors to the town and take our responsibilities as an important employer institution in the town very seriously. And we're not just a group of 1,000-plus students. We're also a group of several hundred adults who live and are part of the community and participate in the activities of the community in many ways beyond just working at Exeter. One thing that I've discovered is that some people think because we're nonprofit that we don't pay any taxes and don't contribute in that way, and we do. So I just think as a matter of public record, I should say that, yes, we're nonprofit, and we don't pay taxes on academic buildings. We do pay very substantial property tax, taxes on our properties that are used as residences. So I think it's important for people to know. And during COVID, you know, we tried very hard to remain open to the town as much as we could. We were guided by three principles: the health and safety of the community, we thought of the community broadly, students, of course, faculty, all of our employees, their families, and the entire community. So the health of the entire community, the student experience, and flexibility, and we're still guided by those. One thing that we were very happy to do, although it didn't end up being used, was when we were asked if we would make our health center available to Exeter Hospital in the spring of 2020, we were very quick to say, yes, absolutely, we will do that. And we did it, as it turns out, happily. There wasn't the need in the town, so we're glad that there wasn't the need. But we're also happy to have the type of relationship where we would be asked and could quickly respond. In terms of COVID, we had a really good fall. Now, that first year, coming in the fall of '20, that was rough for all schools around the country, and our students were taking their classes in library carrels or dormitory rooms, and that was tough for them and tough for their teachers. By the spring, we were vaccinated, and so last year was a lot better, but our community was still particularly at the del level, pretty worn out from the previous year. We started really strong this year. We had masks on for a little while when the students first arrived, but have been mask optional since then, with the exception of the last week before Thanksgiving, where we put masks back on, partly to keep students in circulation. We had a lot of big events, and we didn't want students missing, Exeter Endover Games or Main Stage Play or Choir, but we also didn't want them going home unaware of illness and taking that illness into their homes with parents, grandparents, and siblings. When they returned from Thanksgiving, they did not wear masks. We're not contemplating that they'll be wearing masks tomorrow when they return. Masks will be optional, and some students will very comfortably wear masks, and so will some adults, and others will not. Very hopeful that we'll have a good winter and spring. I follow, and you follow, the science and the news, so we're aware that new variants emerge, and we'll continue to react appropriately with the safety of the school community and the surrounding community in mind. You know, it was pretty tough during the height of COVID when we couldn't allow the students into town, and we couldn't really invite people onto the campus as much as we would like. We actually tried very hard to bring some of the town onto campus in terms of special food deliveries, coffee, donuts, all types of things. So there are ways we tried to continue to support the economy, but it was tough for the students, and I think tough for the town, and so I'm hoping that we won't get back to that stage. You may remember last January was really tough with the Omicron variant, and we actually had students going back into the dormance and library carrels for about 10 days when they first returned in January, and our highest number of cases was the first week back last January, 50-something cases. Because we no longer do surveillance testing, we no longer maintain our COVID dashboard, which we were very happy to maintain and make public when it was useful. We've had cases during the fall at a level that we could manage comfortably, and I hope that will continue. I hope you don't feel that a loss, but if you need more information, please let us know, and we'll try to provide it. So, anyway, that's the status there. Still, do a lot of this, still knocking on wood. The construction projects that I wanted to tell you a little bit about. First, we opened a new dormitory in September. This is the first new dormitory in 50 years. I think it's beautiful. It's worked out really well. It's on Front Street, between two other dorms. Personally, I think it looks like it's been there a long time, and I hope you feel the same way. And we're really, just really happy about the way it worked out. 60 students, it's a girls' dormitory, five faculty apartments. It's built into a slope, and the lower level is actually where we now have our Department of Health and Human Development. So we have five classrooms and a department room in the bottom level of that building. It's worked out really well. That's completed probably the most disruptive part of that construction for the town, is when we were sinking the geothermal wells last summer, because that makes a lot of noise. But of course, we're happy about that as part of our commitment to environmental stewardship, which I'll say a little bit more about at the end. So construction projects underway, or soon to be underway. We have the 35 High Street development. You've seen, we tore down a house that had been vacant for several years, was really beyond repair and not of great historic significance. Went through the planning process, the storage zoning and so on, got all the approvals, of course. We'll have 12 new residential units. I think it's going to be really nice, create a little bit of adult community space, and in combination with the two that are already there, there'll be 14 residents. I think it's going to be very nice. So we're happy about that. Starting spring break, we will close one of our dining halls. This is called Weatherell. It's between the two girls' dormitories known as Langdale and Merrill. It's on Spring Street, and we were gonna, we're gonna tear that down. It's just not cost-effective to renovate it, and we'll build a beautiful new dining hall. I think it's gonna be really lovely. Quite excited about that, and I think it'll be a real asset to the community. We're gonna have a big central dining area that we don't have now in either of our dining halls, so that entire senior class could have a dinner without going to the gym, or reunion, or a faculty dinner, or other things. So we're pretty excited about that. There's a beautiful building on campus that was in my student days, known as Davis Library, next to the library designed by Louis Kahn, and it's been put to secondary uses, and we're gonna reclaim that to first-tier uses and actually move our Classics Department into the ground floor of that building. And so there'll be some construction there. And then the next really big thing that we're gonna need to do is renovate the Academy Building, and timing of that is uncertain, and it'll be a really big project. But we're gonna start one aspect of it this summer, which is why it's timely to tell you about it now, and that is, we will convert that to geothermal heating and cooling, as we did Phillips Hall when we renovated that now, I think, 10 or 11 years ago. And so we will have to tear up the lawn in front of the Academy Building this summer and sink a lot of wells. That also will be a pretty noisy project. But part of our efforts to reduce our carbon emissions, which we in fact have reduced by just about Scope 1 and Scope 2, those are direct emissions and indirect from the purchased electricity, we've reduced those carbon emissions by about 65% already, and we're working very hard right now on a sustainability and climate action plan, which I hope we will release this year, and in there, make further commitments to the reduction of carbon emissions. I think an intermediate goal and perhaps a bolder goal further out for 2050, and we're working on that. But it'll also reflect a number of other ways that we have already acted on our environmental commitments and other ways that we hope to, everything from energy use to recycling to composting and so on. And of course, we're a school, so how we incorporate this into our curriculum and how we send the students out into the world with an awareness of the challenges and threats of climate change and the importance of stewardship of the environment is part of our environmental, our educational mission. So that's very much in the works as well. So there was a lot of highlights. I hope that's helpful. I want to express again, very meaningful to me to be invited. Thank you, Russ, to present, and our place in the town means a lot to us, and anytime that any members of the Select Board have questions of the school or ways that you think we can be stronger members of the community, we would want to hear that, and we just want to express great gratitude for the support of the town.
Great. Thank you very much for the very thorough update on some very exciting projects and initiatives.
Lot going on.
Lot going on. Glad to hear not a whole lot about COVID, but any comments or questions for Principal Rosson?
I have a couple of memories, I guess, because I grew up here. I remember when the, when the school went co-ed, what a big thing that was, and we were very happy to see it. I knew one of the first, I think I was the same year as the first class of young women that were there. And then I have another fun fact for you, which.
Sorry, I'm from the last part?
I have another fun fact for you, which you may, your facilities people may already know, but the Diamond Library, the Public Tuck High School, the Phillips Church, and Exeter's Public Library, which is now the Historical Society, were all designed by the same firm or an offshoot of that firm. And the Diamond Library and the Tuck High School, excuse me, had their laying of the first stone on the same day. So, yeah, so it was fun for them. I do have a question, and it's about the Performing Arts Center.
Yes.
How do we find out what's open for us to come see?
Oh, that's a really good question, and it strikes, you know, at an important issue. How do we share facilities with the town, particularly during a period of COVID, without impairing our own programs for our students? So we sometimes have outside speakers in the assembly, and we'll have them speak the night before, and it's open to the public, and then they'll speak to the students the next day. So I'll have to, I'll actually have to, I'm not sure of the answer to the question, how we disseminate public information and when and things are open to the public, so maybe I'll get back to you with better information on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to thank you for coming to us with the COVID updates and the community focus for your community and our whole community, and I would love to hear more in the future about sustainability efforts.
So, you know, we have a large campus and a large number of buildings. People don't realize necessarily that we also have quite a substantial number of acres of woods and the trails, of course, that we manage, and so we take very seriously that responsibility. And also, we own, you might be surprised to know, a swamp in Fremont. It's technically called a fen, although when I last looked at a map, it used both words. A fen has water moving through it. A swamp apparently doesn't. So we actually manage quite a bit of natural resources as well. We have quite a number of student environmental action committees. They've been doing a Dorm Green Challenge these past several weeks, where the students could compete through various activities. We've substantially increased our composting for central dining. We're not composting effectively at the dormitory level, so that's an important thing for us to try to figure out. We have reduced our energy and water usage, a lot harder to measure how we reduce our water usage for technical reasons. I don't want to say too much about what commitments might be in the plan, because I don't want to be wrong. I want, I want to, we're trying to be bold, but I can't get ahead of the trustees on that. A number of our buildings are lead certified at different levels. That's one of the ways that we reduce our energy uses through thick insulation. We spent several million dollars now, almost 15 years ago, tightening all our steam tunnels. A lot of energy was escaping, and you could see this, because you could see green grass wherever the tunnels, wherever the steam tunnels go, with deep snow on either side. So that's not a particularly glamorous activity, and it certainly wasn't a naming opportunity for a donor, but those millions of dollars had impact on our energy usage and associated emissions. So there's really a full range of activities. If you look at our curriculum 10 years ago and looked at it today, I think you'd also be impressed with a number of ways that we've added opportunities for students to explore these issues through not just science disciplines, such as chemistry of climate change, but also in humanities and religion courses and things like that. And we've integrated climate science units into all of our introductory physics, biology, and chemistry classes. So there's a lot going on there as well. I'm trying to think what else, but that's sort of a sampling.
Yeah, no, it's a wonderful thing to do.
So a lot of student committees, we have an adult committee that's comprised of faculty and staff. I've met with the student leadership of the Environmental Action Committee several times, and they've presented assembly and so on, so it's a very important part of what we're doing. This isn't an answer to a question, but one thing I haven't spoken to directly, but we've done a really important work in the last few years around equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's terribly important to me. It's one of my top priorities, so I should have said more about it at the outset. At all levels of the community and all levels of programming, we have a Director of Equity and Inclusion, Dr. Stephanie Bramlett, whose first day was my first day. And I actually reached out to her in June and said, we're starting on the same day, and your success is going to be one of my highest priorities. And she's done a terrific job. The community has done a terrific job. It's not the job of one person, but it's very, very important to us. I start out every assembly telling the students the same thing I wanted to know when I was a new student. I tell them, yes, you can do the work, absolutely. And I say, my exact words are, yes, you can do the work, you will make lifelong friends, absolutely, you belong here. And this is for all of our students, from wherever they come from and whatever doubts they might have, but creating an environment where all members of the community, adults and students alike, have a strong sense of belonging and strong opportunities to thrive is fundamental to our mission, inseparable from what it means to be an excellent school and a very important part of the work that we've been doing the last few years.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'm just gonna throw in really quickly two comments. First, Stephanie is amazing, and if you see her running in town, that's not me. I often get asked, oh, you run every morning. I'm like, no, 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 that's Stephanie Bramlett. I am not the impressive runner in town, but she's wonderful and a great resource. And then the second point. And then the second point is, Julie, the question that you had about performing arts and other, there are tons of, if you go onto the website, actually, and I know just because throughout the athletics portion, SO, so for families in town who have young kids who want to take part in opportunities on campus, you can go online and sign up through that. For performances, there are different links within the music, the theater, the arts, the dance. And if you add your name to the list, they'll update you on how you can attend performances live to get tickets, or you can watch virtually if there are performances that are restricted to
Yeah.
students and faculty and members on campus.
Great.
But it was a great question, because I looked at a
Thank you very much. A lot of the events are livestreamed.
Yeah.
And the capacity is limited. And usually, they're, we're filled up with students pretty fast. Some of the music events, though, are more open. We often have guests from Riverwoods come. And so there are ways to find us out. I'm just not expert at it, but
I think we learned.
You're smooth like me. You
Yeah. Thank you.
Free concerts are
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So it's nice to, it's nice to have you back. And, you know, obviously, our community is enriched having the students and their families, you know, come downtown and, and, you know, having them around town and also, you know, opening the trails up to our community. And I think it's, it's a really nice partnership that we have. And I particularly want to thank you for, during COVID, being so transparent as you were with what was going on in your world and coming and finding out what we were doing and trying to find a way to expeditiously but safely get the kids, the students back into the community. And we're also thankful for when it was possible, opening up the trails for our community during COVID. So I think that for such an awful pandemic, what it's done, Principal Rossin, is it's opened up a communication. You've been a regular here at Select Board meetings, and I, we hope that that can continue with all of the good news now that you have with the exciting projects and so forth. And I, I have to, you know, echo what Selectwoman Belanger said. We're looking at ways to become increasingly more sustainable than we already are. So anything that we can partner with you or learn from you and vice versa, we'd love to be able to share ideas with you.
Ah, that's terrific. I will tell you, I remember a day in the spring of '21 when we were having an outside assembly, and I announced to the students that they go into town. I could have been elected to anything on that. It was quite a roar, and they were really excited. And I think the town was excited to have them back.
Absolutely.
That was a fun moment. So thank you very much for inviting me.
Thank you.
Please invite me again.
We will.
And be very happy to come back.
We will. Thank you.
Happy to be here.
Happy to be here.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have an update from our health officer, who's gonna speak on several initiatives and giving, give us his annual report.
Sure.
Mr. James Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So per NHRSA 128 colon 3, the local board of health must meet once a year, just to go over quick updates. I'll try not to take up too much time, but I just want to give you an update on what we're planning on doing this year and kind of review. So to begin with, we have a pilot program coming to Exeter. It's actually starting this upcoming week, January 11th at 6:00 PM at the high school. This is to offer free well water testing for private well users in Exeter. So this is a pilot program from the state. They'll be testing water from private wells throughout the seacoast, and they're doing different towns, kind of in a piecemeal fashion. They don't want to overload the laboratory in Concord, but it's free well water testing, which is huge, because this is like a $400 value of what they're testing for. And it's completely free for any well user in Exeter or North Hampton. So you can either be the well owner or a renter if you have a private well, so not public well systems that are interconnected, but a private well, this is an opportunity for you. Like I said, Wednesday, January 11th at 6:00 PM at the Exeter High School, we'll be having a workshop. So if you're interested in the free well testing, you do have to make it to that workshop. We'll be going over how to test your water and giving you the sampling materials. Due to the, the lab requirements, we kind of have to get those materials in people's hands, so we are requiring people to be at that workshop to participate. There is a email address to register. It is weltest@des.nh.gov. This memo is in the packet, so if anyone wants that information, it's available there. You just have to send an email saying that you're going, or, you know, a neighbor can go for you if you're not able to make it. If you have a well, tell your neighbors as well. They'll be testing for bacteria contaminants, which is pretty standard, heavy metals, including arsenic, and PFAS, which has been a big thing, especially on the seacoast. So again, it's a really great value. It's absolutely free for people that can make it. January 11th, if weather gets bad, we have a backup day of January 12th as well, about 6:00 PM at the high school. If you need any more information on that, you can reach out to me at my office. My phone number and email address is in the packet as well.
James, can I stop you? Melissa, is there a, we'll look at this on the website. Thank you.
I think Bob has put it up on the website. We also have the flyers down at the town library downstairs here, and flyers available in the packet as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
So moving on to the next item, we have COVID-19. I didn't really put much of an update in this, for this meeting. I know there's new variants coming out, and we continue to follow the same recommendations from the state and the CDC. The state even has updated their website, just kind of pointing to the CDC at this point. So it's, it's in a state where we know what it is. It's here. It's probably gonna be here for a while, but I, I used to have a drill sergeant that used to tell us every time we were doing pushups or whatever, like, I'm giving you the answers to the test. Like, we have the answers to the test at this point. We have the, the knowledge now where we didn't in the very beginning. So it's the same test. We just gotta keep doing the right thing where we can, when we can. And, you know, eventually, hopefully, we'll get better treatment options. But for the moment, especially during the winter, we just need to be careful, be aware, and, you know, try to push through. As far as the Select Board or the Board of Health, I don't think any actions needed at this time. I do recommend that we continue to watch the hospital and be in communication with them and kind of use the hospital as a gauge to see, you know, if the Select Board or Board of Health does need to take any action.
James, can I ask a question? What, can you remind us the CDC guidelines currently? If you start feeling symptoms, that starts as day zero, day zero, and then there's day one, and you have five days? Can you, can you just go through that for folks?
So if you are feeling any symptoms that are associated with COVID-19, the first thing you should do is get tested. There are home tests available. You can get them at convenient MD or other medical offices, your PCP. If you're feeling any symptoms, first thing you should focus on is getting tested. So whether you're, if you're positive, if you had no symptoms and you're positive, or you had symptoms and later tested positive, whichever came first, the positive test or the symptoms, that is your day zero.
Okay.
So day zero is symptom onset or positive test, whichever comes first. So if you can't test that day where you first had symptoms, but three days later you get a positive, start back when you had the symptoms. That is day zero. So after day five, you can return to work, the community. You should be isolating for day zero through five. After day five, you can return wearing a mask, is the current recommendation.
Even if you're still testing positive?
Yes.
Okay.
So after day 10, you can carry on without the mask.
Understood. Okay.
People could be testing positive for weeks afterward. We don't wait for a negative test just because for some people, it doesn't come. So that's the current CDC guidance and recommendation for if you're positive.
Great. Thanks.
Next up, as of December 28th, we got our newest FDA food code. So usually, these are once every four years. This time was five. I don't know why. But we got a new food code. So the way our ordinances are written, it, we automatically adopt the newest food code. So there weren't too many changes in this one. A few definitions had changed. Who's responsible for cooking temps changed, but nothing that we can't go over with the restaurant managers in town. I mean, these are pretty easy changes. The biggest changes were hand washing temperatures for sinks went from over 100 to 85 degrees.
Wow.
So that's important. I, they have the, the lab coats and the Bunsen burners and all the science. I don't. So if they're saying it's good, it's good. So that's that. The biggest rule change that I wanted to bring to you, though, was dogs in outdoor seating areas. So previously, the FDA food code stated that dogs, pet dogs, were not allowed on the premises of a restaurant. So that includes outdoor dining. Some towns in New Hampshire, the self-inspecting cities and self-inspecting towns kind of chose to maybe not enforce that part. Some did. It never got brought up to me, so I kind of, you know, didn't bother with it. But now it's out there that the FDA no longer prohibits dogs on outdoor patios, depending on the jurisdiction. So they leave it up to the jurisdiction to decide. So pet dogs would still not be allowed inside restaurants, but I think it may be something for the Board of Health, the Select Board, to take up. It's January 3rd, so hopefully, we don't have that question for a little while. We don't need an answer tonight, per se, but does the town of Exeter want to allow dogs on outdoor patios? Personally, I'm either way. I mean, I don't see too much of an increased risk factor where if you're eating outside, there's miscellaneous sources of contamination everywhere. But I think it's up to the board. Like I said, either way, I'm not really opinionated on it. It could be just left up to the individual restaurants to decide, or we could decide to keep the original ruling of the FDA food code that no dog should be on the premises. So not for tonight, but just to put it out there, it might be something that we
So when would you want the board ideally to take this back up?
Good question.
Warmer outdoors?
Maybe when someone calls me about it.
And just one other, are there other things that we need to consider that other towns put into? It's not just a matter of sanitary. Is it a matter of safety? Is it a matter of allergies for, like, what else are we thinking about that we're not thinking about yet?
Right.
So you don't need to answer now, but just to make it so that we're not having four conversations about it?
Yeah. I mean, the state has been looking into this as well. Even before this food code change came out, the state has been talking about what to do about outdoor dining, and it's kind of been up in the air, and no one really has a good answer for it. So I'll try to collect as much information as possible, and hopefully, some point this spring, we can, you know, reconvene on this. But just wanted to put it out there.
Are there people, I mean, I guess my question would be, is there a huge clamoring to change?
Not yet.
Right.
Other towns and cities, I know Nashua, Manchester have definitely had, been having this conversation. People have been pushing for it there. And now the FDA has come out with this change. I think it's only a matter of time before all independent jurisdictions are questioned on this. So the state's probably gonna hear from more people. I wouldn't be surprised if we hear from more people. Just in preparation for it, I want to make you aware of the change to the code.
So James, when you're talking to other municipalities about this, other towns, would you ask maybe about posting notices if anyone does that, if they're allowed?
Yes, I would certainly ask about that.
Because that was the one question I had. If we, I kind of liked your suggestion of leaving it up to the establishment's decision, but I also think it might be a good idea to have some kind of signage for people who wouldn't know until they go to get seated and that have allergies or fears of dogs or
Absolutely.
Yeah, so thank you.
We'll be having a self-inspecting meeting. The self-inspecting towns and cities have meetings throughout the year. We'll be having one, I believe, later this month. So I'm sure this is gonna be one of the topics there, but I'll definitely bring that up, and we'll probably share some best practices. And after that, I can get back to you. So that's it for the new food code. Those were the only real big changes. This upcoming year, I just want to give you a heads up on this. I'm hoping to bring more public health programs into town. This well water testing is a big one, and with COVID, the past couple of years, it's been tough to kind of look for these programs that we can bring just to benefit residents. But I'm really hoping that either through the state or other, maybe even the regional public health network, we can find more public health programs to bring to the forefront. Exeter Hospital recently conducted a needs assessment, and so I'm gonna be reaching out to them as well to see what the results of that were and see if we can work together on what the community finds are its needs and see if we can find some public health programs to bring forward that would benefit, you know, the residents and visitors. That's really all I have for this update, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Any other questions? Selectwoman Gilman?
Do you work at all or, or interact at all with the county, county
Not
delegation commissioners?
Really, no. The county level, I don't know that there's a county level health department. There's just the regional public health network.
Yeah.
I occasionally work with them, but at the county level, no.
No, I, well, I was thinking more of, on, on the, I can't think of the word, the spread, capacity, what do they call it? That we have a high, high level of
Transmission?
Transmission, thank you, yes. Transmission level right now. And I know that at the nursing facility and assisted living facility, they constantly have staff that are out, constantly. I get a notice every day. And so I just wondered if you were getting any kind of information like that on
I, I don't get updates from them, no.
Yeah, I'll ask about that.
Most of the updates I get are from the Health Alert Network through the state. Those are periodical, but
Okay. I just wanted to see how to connect it.
Anything else?
My other, my only other request for, for you would be to just be in touch with the schools. I am particularly curious now that the COVID, the COVID provision about feeding every kid in school has ended, you know, is there a way to partner with schools?
Sure.
It's probably way too complicated, but I would love to know if there is something that we could do to make sure that kids are having enough to eat and if there are anything, if there are programs that we can implement or
Sure. I'll absolutely get into that.
Great.
And this well testing is really exciting.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely.
And I'll stress, it's mandatory to show up.
Yes. Again, just for residents of Exeter and North Hampton at this one. So for people listening at home from the surrounding communities, I know Stratum is coming up soon. The other committees will be coming up. So we're just one of the first ones. But this is just for residents of Exeter and North Hampton.
And the Assistant Town Manager has confirmed that that's up on the website, information. So folks at home want to check that out. And then my only comment, James, whenever you're ready on the outdoor dining, come back to us, and we'll get you on the agenda for that.
Sure.
Great. Thank you for the updates. Nice to see you again.
Thanks, you, James.
The last discussion item this evening is probably take up the most time. Back in the meeting on the 19th, I'd asked everybody to go through the budget and the bond articles, warrant articles, and bring any questions, comments, revisions, additions, subtractions, what have you. I don't know if anybody, I have, I have several, but I'd open it up first to the rest of the I won't call anyone that just wants to
Well, I have two.
Okay.
Do you have up-to-date data with you by any chance? Mr. Stevens?
With us, we have our Finance Director, Corey Stevens, this evening, as well as the Chair of the BRC, Bob Kelly.
In your pocket is the latest
Okay. So, okay. So September
Data numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Year-to-date numbers
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, year-to-date numbers for 2022. I do not have that.
Okay, yeah, that was unfair to ask you, walking in.
That's all right.
So one of my, not big concerns, but I'm wondering if we should consider increasing the legal budget just a little bit. That is actually on page one, 55050. Oh, sorry, that's 55170 on page two. It's been at 80,000 for quite a bit. We've come very close, if not a little over. And I'm just thinking, we have a lot of issues going on right now. And yes, completely respect BRC. They always do a great job. Sometimes they don't always know what we know. And when we don't fund a line item such as this, the money has to come from somewhere.
Yep.
So I believe that we might want to consider increasing that just a little bit. I don't have a number to suggest coming into this, other than maybe adding, making it 90,000 instead of 80.
Hundred, yeah.
Because we, we don't know how much it's going to be until we get the bill.
We've had a lot of activity over the last several years that has required legal services. You know, I think that that's a good idea. I mean, as far as I can remember, and I'm going to go back now probably seven, eight years, it's been at 80,000.
It, yes. And we have our historians here.
If it's helpful, I can run across. I just ran a budget for a actual today. If it's helpful to your conversation, I can...
No, I mean, I'm okay with this at this level. Oh, look at that. Yes.
It shows you what you want to do with this.
Yeah, I remember you could go into the Finance Directory, and you'd have what I ran today. I can show you what that is. It's okay.
So Select Woman Belanger, I know you didn't have a number. I heard 90, 100.
Yeah, and so, sorry, these microphones always get in my way here.
Under what?
Legal.
Town manager, under legal.
Page two.
Town manager.
Currently, the legal budget's at $80,000.
So in 2021, the actual was 91,974. As of September, this is the fun part about budget, you have to look at different, as of September, we were at 61,325. And again, without stressing too much detail, I've just been concerned about that number.
So Corey has, we were able to pull that?
Your computer.
And I gave him my laptop, so he can answer your question. And I don't know if Russ wants to stress.
Mr. Dean, do you have anything to add on the legal?
Sorry, was that a question for me?
Yes, we were asking any input on you in terms of increasing the legal budget from $80,000.
Yeah, I think the, probably my thought on it is that in any given year, we could, we will definitely spend the 80. The trend has been at least 80. And so if we wanted to move that to 90,000, we would probably spend that as well. I think just in terms of 2021, that was the year we did the collective bargaining agreement, so there was a little bit more spent that way. But it's fair to say legal rates have gone up in the last several years, but the budgets really stayed flat.
Have the number of hours gone up, spent? So what are the number of hours gone up from 19 to 20, 22, et cetera? Like, has it increased substantially? Are we talking about two hours? Are we talking about 10?
Well, I mean, it differs from year to year, but in the last couple of years, we've needed to consult with legal counsel more times than in the past.
No, I get that. I'm just curious.
So I mean, I don't have the total...
If we know actual numbers, that's helpful.
What I would say, I'll give you the number. We've spent 77.5 year-to-date through the end of December. However, we are also not done with booking stuff, I would say.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yes.
So the Town Manager recommended 90, but we, last year, we spent over 90. It looks like this year, we may come close to 90, if not a little over. I think Select Woman Cowan suggested 100.
I mean, I think it's, I think it might be prudent, and it doesn't mean we have to spend it.
No, we don't. Right. It's just because we have line items, we have amounts, that's what we're allotted, and then we have to find the money somewhere else. And I just foresee, of course, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do think that that line item needs to be increased to 90, maybe 95 even, if we split the difference.
So it's trending up the last couple of years. If we increase it to 100, over the next two years, if we find that it's being more towards the 90, 95, and the Budget Recommendations Committee at that time can...
I'm comfortable with that.
Just increase it, increase it, excuse me.
I am comfortable with that. Yeah.
You good with that? Do you want to make a motion?
Okay. Let me get mine back to where I was. So I'm going to move line item 55170, found on page two in the Town Manager section under legal, be increased to, from 80,000 to 100,000.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passed four to one. Select Woman Belanger, did you have any more?
Okay. Actually, yeah, I would like to have a conversation about the police and fire communication, community relations line items. So under police, it's on page 11, I believe. And under fire, it's page 13, and the line items are both the same, 55043. Now, I believe there's an update on this information based from when we talked about, they talked about this, the budget. We've been doing $5,000 for police departments, and the proposal was 2,500 to have fire included. I listened to the discussion. I think that this program, whatever you want to call it, has been very successful. I think Jason Schreiber has done a tremendous job. There were some fears over the last year or two of what would be done with those postings, and I think that those fears have not happened. So I think we're trying to find ways of communicating better and more. I think this is a great way to do it. The social media posts have been very informative, and some are fun. I mean, if anyone followed the elves, that was the highlight of Christmas time was between the fire and the police department. It was so much fun every day. But so, and one of my notes from listening to the conversation at budget this year was expanding this to include other departments. I know from sitting in on the Communications Committee conversations, we're talking about including department heads, but one, I think that we keep throwing things at department heads, and, you know, time is money there, too. I don't, I would like to have a good conversation about ways we can expand on this, and if it's cost-effective, is it cost-effective for the contract with Jason, and how much it would cost for our department heads? And he's very, a very good writer. He knows, he knows what he's doing.
I'm sorry, can you clarify specifically what you're asking?
So there's a, yeah, the last, for the last year, we started as a pilot program for the police department.
Right.
Was Jason Schreiber coming in and working with Chief Poole and on outreach with the good, the bad, and everything in between. And that has been $5,000 a year. And the request came in to the Budget Recommendations Committee to expand this to the fire department as well.
Right.
And the BRC was more inclined to recommend half of the 5,000, which would be 2,500.
Right.
And have Jason do half of what he's doing.
So are we asking for 5,000 for fire as well?
Select Woman Belanger's asking for 5,000, which was the initial request, I believe, and I believe the BRC cut it in half.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the Town Manager.
500 more.
Correct.
However, I added a caveat about...
So I, I'll broadly segue into something I was going to speak to.
Okay, good.
One of the things we've been working on as a board with the Communications Committee is how do we improve communications? And, I mean, let's face it, we have a shrinking presence of community newspaper, whether it be physical newspaper or online. I think Jason's done a tremendous job with the police department, particularly getting information out quickly. We had a very tragic incident a month ago, and there were a lot, there was a lot of false speculation that immediately get out on false media, and I think that the police department, getting that statement out as quickly as they did, was beneficial to the community. I asked the Town Manager to get a quote from Jason as to what it would cost in addition to $5,000 for the police department, 2,500 or 5,000 for the fire department, depending upon how we want to go there, but to have him do it town-wide, for all of our town departments. And Jason gave a quote of $8,000. So it would be 5,000 for the police, 2,500 or 5,000 for the fire, depending upon where our conversation goes there, and then $8,000 for Jason to do what he's doing for all of the town departments. And how that works is Jason, Jason actually writes everything and then runs it by the department head. So when he writes the press release for the police, for instance, Chief Poole gets the final sign-off on it.
So like a marketing manager, basically?
Comms director.
Okay.
Like a comms director, exactly.
Okay, I'm just, I just, what I want to do is because internally, we understand what's going on, but we have to then explain it to people who are listening in, who are trying to figure out why we're spending $8,000 to post something on Facebook.
Absolutely. And this is something that Jason just started, I think, a couple of years ago. So he's still kind of, it's a new, it's something new for municipalities. I mean, I think we're one of the few towns that he's worked with. The advantage is you have a bona fide journalist reporter who's actually doing the writing, and we're not asking a department head to do something that they may or may not be comfortable or qualified doing. Jason's quote of $8,000, I believe, was for two to three posts per week. And my thought was where we have been struggling with, how do we get communications out? It was just a thought for a discussion at the board level as to whether or not we want to invest, and the word being invest, $8,000 to have a professional come in to communicate some of the things we've been struggling to communicate. So that's where I was going with that.
And I just think it's a great communication thing. I don't, social media might not be everyone's cup of tea, but it is a way of getting the word out there. It's awesome quotes. He does Twitter also, by the way.
It's not, exactly. It's not just Facebook. It's Facebook, Twitter, and I believe Instagram.
Yeah. Anyway, it's trying to find ways to get the word out, because we don't have the local newspapers that we had growing up here, and for years. We just don't. I checked Seacoast Online today. They haven't updated anything for Exeter in quite a while. So that was just something I really, I think it's an important step in communications.
His quote was two to three posts per week.
Oh, okay. Without, without trying to sound insulting at all, I think that you might have a lot of, he's, that's a lot of money for that number of posts that I think of many people who are college graduates, women, you know, who are stay-at-home moms, who, I mean, if you truly look at the number of people who are socially media savvy, for two to three posts a week for $8,000, excuse me, it would be, we're talking maybe up to $18,000, right, per year?
No.
If it's 5,000, you said 5,000 for the fire?
You're right, for the three departments.
5,000 at the most for the police, and then an additional $8,000, that's $18,000 that you're paying someone to write two to three posts per week, that then just gets... I'm just saying that if I were at home listening to that, I would think, well, I could do that. I'm, the world is quite modern when it comes to people and how much time they spend on social media, and, you know, who are savvy in writing and able to communicate with people to get the message out in that kind of way. So I'm not saying that it's not a valid role that is being serviced. I just think we need to question, you know, this is not the only option in town. And I just don't want to jump on spending that kind of money for what I think you could probably get some, I'm, I'm saying, I would rather see that there were other people who came to the table offering to do something similar, who have similar skill sets in terms of writing and capturing a message and sending out. You know, I think about young kids who can get like 40,000 people to watch a video in two days, and I, that's a lot of money for that.
How long's our contract? Do we, we do a contract? Is it year-to-year?
My understanding, Mr. Dean, it's annual, correct? Year-to-year?
Yeah, the departments that have this service have a contract with Mr. Schreiber, and it is year-to-year.
Okay. So could we consider, you know, if it's a year-to-year, maybe more people will listen to what Lovey just said and decide to start their own business and put in, you know, we can, they can come to us and do an offer, right?
I mean, if we had a specific, I think, honest to goodness, if we had a specific job position that was a part-time, social media, you know, safety services individual for disseminating information to the public in a savvy and fun and informative way, I kid you not, you would have quite a few people who spend a lot of time sitting on social media, and that's, that's what they do. And if, you know, Chief Poole and a couple of others were to reach out to them, to contact them and say, here's something that we need to get out to the public in the next 30 minutes, can you do it? You know, we have a lot of options. I don't think investing in one sole person. I think that it's something where you, you have options, right? And you do a background check to make sure that it's, but I would like us not to commit to the first thing that, and two to three posts per week is, for that amount, is honestly insanity.
Well, we've been, how many years have we been doing this?
Doesn't make it, doesn't make it right?
No, it's...
But we've, I know, but we've been discussing that the last couple of years, we've had such issues with communication, and you're saying that we've been with this person for the last two years. And, and people are like sending missed messages online constantly, and, you know, we were all present for what happened over the last couple of weeks and how quickly that started to, you know, go in all sorts of different directions. So it's not a matter of like, this has been working in an amazing and incredible way for the last two years, and Exeter is like at the forefront of communications when it comes to X, Y, and Z. I mean, I just want to be honest and upfront about it. I don't think...
Good conversation.
It's $18,000.
So when we began a year ago, year and a half ago, with the police department, it was as a pilot for that department to see, it was something new. Jason was starting this out, and we took it on as a pilot. It has been rather successful with the police department, and that's why the fire department wanted in. Because it had been so successful with police and fire, you know, I'm not committed to Jason being the only guy in town.
That's all I'm saying.
What I ask for him is, you're already doing it for police and fire, can you give us a quote? And he gave us a quote, and that's why I'm bringing it to the table tonight for, just for this purpose.
So I don't have issue with the quote as much as I have issue with the amount of work that's going into said quote. I think with that amount of money, what we should be getting in, in exchange for it, for the multiple departments, should go beyond just fire and, you know, police. It should fall under James Murray and health and safety. It should, it should do all of the things that we've been having these conversations about. And it can, I personally think it can be done with not a lot of extra, you know, this is, we're, no offense, we're not writing, you know, Pulitzer here that's going to be published for national news. This is like, we want to get messages out really quickly to the Exeter community so that people know, this is what you should avoid. This is what's great to, we have, you know, we're going to test your well-water, make sure that you're here, like, make it flashy, whatever you need to do, but now everyone knows about it. Like, all of that should fall within the same bucket if we're spending $18,000. Otherwise, I'd rather spend it on, you know, the programs that we said no to, because it seemed to cost too much when it came to actual safety and money going into things that the police and fire department needed.
I'm of, I'm of two minds here. I think that there, you know, I would be really interested in the metrics to see like, okay, what is the, what is the reach? What is the post, you know, how many new people are following and engaging with us on social media? Is that the only place? Is that the most effective place? I would also be really interested in knowing and having a analysis of like, I think it's great that the police have elevated their social media presence, but our police aren't, you know, if you need the police, you will find the police, right? It's not something that's like, oh, we need to really, you know, let everybody know that the police are there. People will find the police if they need the police. The places that we need help in elevating are like, okay, what do you do if you're trapped? The places that we need help in elevating are like, okay, what do you do if your trash bags ripped? You know, what do you do, right? What do you do, you know, when, when is DPW doing some exciting program? Because there are a ton of things that happen, you know, what is, what about Parks and Rec? What about all of these things, you know? How do we ever get people to come to our meetings when we need them to come, you know?
Physicians.
How, how are we, you know, so I, I agree, you know, I agree we need to do something because there is a communications problem. We do, we are not disseminating our information as broadly as we need to. And I also am of the mind, like, it is actually helpful to have somebody who knows how to write, concise, you know, knows how to cover things, like, all of that is appealing. And, you know, $18,000, if you're thinking of, you know, having a communications person for the town, you know, if we had somebody like that, you know, a position would be, you know, in the $60,000 range. So I don't know that I agree that it's, you know, that it's, I, I, I mean, I think that, I don't know that I'm committed to two or three posts a week because I don't know that I'm sold on that's the most beneficial place to spend time. You know, elevate, like, I agree, you know, we have, we have to celebrate our great departments, but we, I think are elevating maybe the wrong ones. You know, the, the places that people need to find information about are...
Which is why I was excited about adding the other department. So we're talking about 18, so right now it's 5,000 for police. The BRC, or what's in our budget right now, is 2,500 for fire. And I don't know, maybe we can ask Jason, you know, the 8,000 if, if he can kind of rethink.
Sharpen the pencil.
A little bit, yeah. Yes, because that's great information. I, I was thinking about that for the future, knowing that he's reached out with a number is, is good to know. I think Department of Public Works does a great job getting things out, but that's the exception. I, I would love to see more on sustainability efforts and energy efforts and, and other things, right? So, I don't know. I, I just think it's a good tool.
So, Mr. Dean had his hand up, and Mr. Kelly, you had your, your hand up. Back to the, to the origin of the conversation, I, you know, I asked Jason for a quote based upon the discussions at the BRC level, just to see what the quote would be.
No, thank you for that.
We've, we've functioned fairly well up till now without Jason. And, you know, I don't think that the world would come crashing down on Exeter if we don't, if we don't do this. It was worth looking into.
Thank you. That was my point.
To see, to see what the resource would be, and, and the difference between creating a part-time position for whatever that amount may be is that once you create the position, it's awful hard to get rid of the position. Whereas a pilot like this on a year-to-year contract, if at the end of the year, we figure, you know what, this, this really didn't work out the way we wanted, we thank Jason and, and we move on.
I have competition.
And there might be competition. The beauty of having, in my opinion, a professional like this is that we, we have committees that have come to the Select Board wanting to disseminate information on social media on their own. And our social media policy right now prohibits that because it's under the town seal. And, you know, these folks are volunteers, and, you know, in their defense, they're volunteers. They, they, they don't do this for a living. And where we've talked about communication improvement, we've had the Communications Committee come before us, the idea struck that it's worth having this discussion, and it's a very good discussion, of the pros and cons of having a professional be that one contact person who can write up the information and have either the town manager, assistant town manager, whoever is delegated, much like Chief Pullen, much like Chief Wilking, sign off on it. So I think Select Women Roundtree, if you brought up some excellent points, that there are other people that could do it. That maybe the quote is high, maybe the, maybe it's, it's more quantity than quality at this point. I don't know.
My, my biggest concern is that we have handed to someone else and said, how much should we pay you to do what you'd like to do? I'm asking that we set the guideline of what we want, what we need, what's going to work well for our town, and then say, with, this is, this is what our needs are. These are what our needs are. How much does that cost? You know, because I just think if you, if you hand it over to someone and say, what should we pay you that you think is worth your time? Any smart person will say, as much as you can.
Yeah. No, and I, I think you're right. And I would, I would say too, to counter that, he's never done it at this scope. I actually think at the end of the day, if it's the amount of work that I think it would be just based on the police department, I think he may be undercutting himself. In my opinion, but I don't know because we haven't done it.
Yeah. Right.
If you break down the number of hours he spends, and, you know, it could be a lot.
You're saying, you're breaking down the number of hours he spends, but he's not, is he here doing the work? Is this remote work? I'm just, I'm, I'm being the, I, I feel like I have to just, because I don't know him, so it's easy for me to do this, be the voice of dissent to say like, are we paying for intellectual property? Are we paying for time and energy spent? Because there's a very big difference. You know, if we've got a PhD, you know, renowned author, and he's writing like really prolific pieces on, on, you know, the latest fire downtown, like, okay, I guess. You know, it's going to be in somebody's, you know, John Irving will quote it in some book. But if we're talking about somebody who's writing up a piece that then the chief is going to sign off on, and it's two to three per week, I need to understand why it costs as much as that does.
So, Mr. Dean, you had your hand up. Maybe you have more information since you've actually talked with Jason a little more than I have.
Yeah, Ja- Jason handles this like a freelance reporter, in effect. He, he does do the work on an ongoing basis with the departments by visiting them and then setting the bar for his, you know, his publishing each week. The one thing I wanted to mention was that as a town, as far as I know, we're not aware of any sort of major market that's emerging. And the other thing is I go back to what Chief Pullen said when Jason was first hired, which was, you know, he has years of experience as a writer and a reporter, and the skillset to work his way around social media and so forth. So he's combining those two skillsets. And I agree, it's a negotiation back and forth between the town and himself as far as what might be fair. But he's also included in his proposals, you know, a look at sort of what this kind of writing and publishing would cost the town if it went, you know, if it went to the outside world of traditional publishing. And my understanding is it would cost a lot more.
Melissa, did you have something?
Yeah, a little bit to what Russ was saying. So just so everyone's aware, in the first budget proposal, Jason had asked for 7,500 distributed to police because of how many hours that he spends down actually at the department. I don't know if you guys can remember, but he's here for swearing-in ceremonies. He was here, he wrote the article, I believe, about the watering trough. He was there. So he shows up at a lot of things just so that we're all understanding what it is. That is not to say that, you know, the, the second 8,000, or not second, but the 8,000 couldn't, we can't have a discussion about who's doing it, but there are, there is in-person time as well as, as the time at home writing, just to let everyone know.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Nico. Bob Kelly, Chair of the Budget Recommendations Committee. I just want to, before we start looking at different budget numbers, I want to make sure that we have the right numbers because in our budget from September, we had that the police budget was 7,500, Melissa's point. If that, if you have different information, then we, then we got the wrong information.
Wasn't that the 7,500, though? Wasn't that inclusive of something else in addition to Jason's work?
Exactly. So there are, the 7,500 isn't just Jason's work. It's like, I believe it's National Night Out with Bruce Page and a few other things. The 7,500 was a quote from Jason to the police department at first. And so when they came with, to Cory, Russ, and I, and it got brought down before it made it to you.
I'll make a note to adjust the note so that we can call that out because we were operating under the assumption that Jason's work was 7,500 for public relations.
That was brought up during the police and fire subcommittee meeting here, when you had that discussion. That, that's how I knew the answer to that question.
Okay.
Just because it was discussed.
I didn't write that note down.
National Night Out, and then the other, the other community events that the police do.
Great. Thank you.
So Nancy, after that long discussion about what I was going to talk about later, you're, you're back on the budget of the fire light item. We'll bring it back to...
Okay, so...
To make a motion or further discussion?
Well, is this the only night we can do this?
Nope.
Okay. So I, before I do that, I hesitate to do that. If, if maybe someone would go back to Jason and see if he can sharpen that pencil a little bit and be a little bit more specific maybe with the data to help.
I think that's very fair. Mr. Dean, if, if you or Melissa could reach out to Jason this week, we can discuss this next Monday, and, and maybe in sharpening the pencil, even though we have two line items now with the potential maybe for a third, depending upon what the board thinks, maybe Jason can sharpen that pencil to one light item? Or, or I, I'll take that back. One figure that can be split between three light items, like we do with general fund water sewer. This would be town, uh, town manager, police, and fire, if you understand what I'm saying. So take the $18,000 total and, and see if he can do a little bit better. And also to Select Women Roundtree's comments, maybe give us a bit more of a thorough breakdown of what that money will buy the town.
I am also very interested in analysis of before and after. So what was the reach? What were, you know, are, like, are we talking about doubling our audience, tripling our audience, not anywhere near that? Like, what are we talking about?
You know, that was asked, somebody asked that question at the police-fire subcommittee.
Yeah, but I didn't have...
Mr. Kelly, do you remember the answer to that? Somebody asked the question of what were the metrics over the last year? How many hits there were? Russ and Melissa, maybe you have that, but somebody did ask the question.
It was, it was Dr. Swan because I know he was, had some of the similar concerns that Lovey does. So I'm pretty sure it was him, and that was discussed actually at length.
It was.
Of, of the metrics, what we were getting for the...
Yeah, I'll, then I'll go back and look at it because I would be really interested to know.
Yeah. And Jason can give us that update because he wasn't at that meeting too. I mean, not that, I get it, it's, it's...
Well, and I don't, right.
...directly from him is, is...
Well, yeah. And if, and if we're, if we don't actually see reach information, like, that's what I want to see.
Yeah. And I was going by the, by the police department and, and their recommendation to continue this and felt it was very successful, so.
And I apologize. I don't, I don't remember, but I believe Chief Pullen had a statistic as to how many...
Yeah, that would be great.
I just, I don't remember what it is. So maybe Mr. Dean, in that, in that, maybe summary that Jason can give us, maybe he can give us all of that data.
Yes, we'll, we'll be able to get that, and Justin Pizon had data as well at the Budget Recommendations Committee. I remember that specifically, so we can get that as well.
Okay.
And this is not to negate the importance of the communication. It's just to make sure that, you know, our funds are going in the direction where we're getting the most bang for our buck. And then just one last point that I'm curious about. So he's not respond, obviously, the, once messages are sent out, articles are written, there's not a response then, right? So especially like on Facebook or something like that, when things are posted, there's, there's no follow-up to, oh, well, what does this mean, or how did this happen? So I, I, I put that out as a, a point of importance because then it opens up a, this, you know, black hole almost, where if you send out information, it has to be sent in such a way where if you're not going to open the lines of communication or close comments completely, we run into issues of even more confusion sometimes. So in that realm of what he's doing, then perhaps we consider if there's a particular page where these, where all of this information is posted about the town, that we figure out a way to then, you know, it's a one-way communication point. There's not, there's no like follow-up, and people are arguing within the comments of an article that was sent out or posted so that, you know, we can also protect ourselves in that kind of way, I think would be important for us to, to do so that we're not having this expectation that he's going to follow up with, with folks, and it's not Chief Pullen or, or anyone else having to do that.
So Russ, when, when Jason writes these, we'll use the police department as an example, it's, it's produced under the Exeter Police Department's official social media page. And I'm trying to think back.
Yes, that's correct.
No, I understand that, but I'm trying to think...
And it's all approved by the chief.
No, I know that, but I'm trying to think back to posts I've seen, whether or not there's been a response by the police department, because presumably it would be the police department's responsibility to respond if there were a question. Is that correct?
That's correct. They do the follow-up.
And I know I've seen it on the fire where somebody's asked a question and, and the fire department has responded. But I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to think back quickly on police. I don't...
I don't remember any, but I've spent a lot of time.
Staff member on the department that would be responding.
I've just been periodically checking. I get notifications because I've been curious over the last year, year and a half, on how this is going to work out, so.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so good discussion. Mr. Dean, we'll have that information on the ninth?
We will. Thank you.
Select Woman Beland or any other?
No, I just, I'll just, those are my two, other than to thank the BRC, which I'm sure you're going to, to the Budget Recommendation Committee. I always find those deliberative conversations very informative. I, I like that they added the net zero option under the warrant articles for the police station, fire substation. Yeah. And just to remind everyone that there was a discussion at BRC about conservation and where we might want to go in the future, so that, that should be a, a conversation that the board should have too at some point. We are, I think, police second in the state, just under UNH. And, you know, it's zero taxes. It's just looking at the whole picture. And so, and I, and I believe the Conservation Commission is going to come to talk to the board during budget about that because they were a little concerned about that part of the conversation.
Okay.
And I, they were going to go to deliberative session, which of course I want everyone to show up at deliberative session, but I asked them to come here and talk to the chair because I felt that was the best venue for them, and I'm assigned to Conservation Commission, so.
So hopefully they'll be here for the budget here?
Yes, and I'll follow up with, with Kristen tomorrow, just to remind her. See if they, they still are interested in doing that.
Love to have them.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
And Mr. Kelly, just before I go move on, all of the suggestions that you made at the last meeting have been incorporated into the draft board articles, so thank you very much for those. Select Woman Gilman?
No, I had the same question on the legal. I think I've asked that a couple of years. And, and this discussion about the communications, I'd, I'd also like to continue. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the possibilities as opposed to, you know, this is, this is what we do here, do it there, you know? You know, we've talked in general about getting committees wanting to get more out there, and it would, it would be great to have a consistent voice. That's why we don't want a random committee to be speaking out there. So I guess I'm looking, as we've kind of agreed on, a more specific list, almost job description, but... But that's, that's really it.
Okay. Thank you. Select Woman Cowan? Nope. Select Woman Roundtree?
I think you're very nice.
I disagree.
I'm good.
I disagree, but thank you. I, I just had one more for discussion. Adding a, adding a budget line item under Parks and Rec for a $1 placeholder for the unknown cost of the multiple water fountains that are being put out. I think that adding a placeholder for the dollar, we know that that's going to be an expense. a placeholder for the dollar, we know that that's going to be an expense, it's an unknown expense. We're going to be hearing back from the Sustainability Committee and I think that establishing a dollar placeholder would be a prudent thing to do and I'll open that up for discussion.
No, I agree. I totally agree.
Yeah, so we need to look at the, at the costs so we can figure out how to move forward with the single plastics.
So.
Or ordinance, whichever we want to call it, but it's important, so thank you.
Regardless of the single-use plastic, the Parks and Rec Department had already moved forward with putting the watering.
Yeah.
Watering fountains in and what came up during the single-use plastics was the unknown of what that cost will be to Parks and Rec. It will be different than their water and sewer bill naturally, so. Russ, how would we go about adding a budget line item for that?
That one for me?
Yes, how would we go about adding?
We would add, we could add that into the, into the Parks and Rec budget as a standalone line item with its own title.
Okay.
For the dollar and then charge against it, that's my thought.
So we'd need to create a budget line item number along with a budget line item description.
Our finance director's taking, said yes?
Melissa?
Can I just have to follow up? Because right now that's being paid out of rec revolving, so we're actually talking about two different funds. So are we talking about putting that into the general fund or are you talking about breaking it out within the park revolving fund?
Well, right now we're not paying for it at all because they're not done. So what my, where I was going with this is with the unknown of what that water cost will be, in addition to the unknown of what other potential costs may be as a result of, you know, the ongoing proposed policy, having that dollar placeholder would, would be a prudent thing to do at this time because of those unknown costs for Parks and Rec.
Can I ask a silly question?
No question silly.
I have the answer to this one. How do we, how do we, how do we monitor that? I mean, right, that would it have to have its own meter?
Mr. Kelly, you're wearing two hats tonight?
Bob Kelly, Chair of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. When I was at the hearing last, or two weeks ago, where, or the discussion on that, that was my first thought was the logistics of providing water. You know, the first thing I thought of was the little alcove down by Cory's office with the public restrooms. Who deals with that in the wintertime? Who maintains it? You know, there are obviously a lot of utility questions, never mind the other parts of it, which are all very good. It's a good program to investigate, but much like any other committee, like, you know, Parks and Rec in general, there is a water usage and they get charged for it. That charge may not actually show up on their budget, it may just become, because we're all on the same team, but that would have to be factored in if there's, if one of these, you know, refill units bursts a pipe at 3:00 in the morning and doesn't get found for three weeks, you know, that's a lot of water that, that the town is paying to make.
I knew we called the right person because I hadn't thought of that.
Those considerations have to be rolled into the, you know, single-use plastics are the bane of our existence, I think we can all agree with that, but the fix has to be really thought out because there are costs associated with the fix. And so again, Russ and I can talk about how we do it on the water and sewer charging part of it. Again, it would probably just be rolled into the town budget, we would pay for it and effectively write it off.
Right, right, we have a little time.
Because there's nothing in the budget, you don't see fire, the fire department or any of the buildings, there's no line item that talks about a, a water bill.
No, there isn't.
It's all part, you know, that's the service we provide, so, but there is a cost to it.
There is a cost to everything. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I knew I was calling on the right man. Right man for the job, so that's something we'll have to.
Yep. So Russ, you'll bring that one back on the ninth too?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Please.
So to Melissa's point, are we, are we talking about adding it to rec revolving or something in the general fund budget?
My suggestion was to the general fund because it would be separate from, obviously there's no sewer involved and I, and I just thought it would be separate from.
I think the, the, because of the public infrastructure that's involved, which is different from most of what the rec revolving fund pays for in order to understand the benefit of the, that we do need to have as a general fund item instead of being buried into the.
And it's not, you know, we're not throwing an arbitrary figure, it's a placeholder.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
And go ahead, Melissa.
I will work with Russ to reach out with Matt and Greg because from working in the pool, I know we used to have a meter for the pool and then a meter for the bathrooms and the bubbler and so I guess we'll have to see is that meter going to be the bathrooms and the bubbler or, you know, that. So those are some of the logistics we have to think about, so I don't know that we'll get an answer right by the ninth, but we can certainly get the line items set up.
Well, I don't think we need, yeah, we don't need that answer because remember there's more, there are other bubblers and other parks that are not affiliated with the pool and, you know, further to that, that was one of, when, when Kristin Murphy presented this to the Swayze Park trustees on, in the November meeting, you know, they were all for the concept, but the question was, you know, before we agree to put it there, how? Who's paying for it? What's it going to cost and so forth and so on? So, you know, they've kind of, they're, they're cautiously optimistic that it could be a good idea, but they've given Kristin her homework and there's no pressing need to put it in Swayze Park right now anyway. But where Greg's already gone ahead and done this great work for all of the parks, I think it's worth having that, just that placeholder.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions on the budget? Mr. Kelly, any closing remarks?
Just one, thank you, Nico. I, in my, it's sort of like a, an Oscars presentation, you try to thank as many people as you can. You always forget your mother or something like that. And I forgot to thank, you know, extensively on behalf of the committee, our, our town manager, Russ, I wish he was here, but thank you, Melissa, as well. The two of them really helped us out quite a bit. This budget that we were presented was fantastic. There was a lot of pushback way before the BRC got involved that was very apparent because many of the department heads in their presentations said, well, we wanted this, but, you know, this is, it's like, great, you know? And so the town manager and assistant town manager did a fantastic job in presenting a really, really nice budget. And I met with, with both of them throughout the process and it was very interactive and they were invaluable to our efforts, so I really want to thank Russ and Melissa for their efforts. And thank you for, for hearing us out.
So while you're standing there, may I, Mr. Chair? I personally want to thank you. I, I've watched you for many years on the budget and I hope that people at home understand the process of the Budget Recommendation Committee. When there's a need for an increase, you're always looking for a way to decrease in some other area. You're always trying to find the balance.
Right.
Always, and, and very much appreciated. Always admired the work on the Budget Recommendation Committee.
Thank you, Nancy. When the report we gave to you in early December, one of the comments at the end was based on a lot of feedback from the committee and one of the thing, it's not all about dollars and cents, it's about quality of life. You know, we all love this town, it's a very special town, even on the seacoast, that is full of special towns, but certainly in this state. And we, as a town, work very hard to balance spending money and, but, or, you know, maintaining a level for the taxpayers that doesn't break them, but also continuing that quality of life. So I think we, as a town, do a very good job with that, but thank you for your time.
I see the process every year. I admire the process every year.
What was the magazine that we were featured in, New Hampshire Business Review? Just talking about the quality of life and the specialness of Exeter in the area, there was a really good write-up about the town and how it's maintained its history and, you know, we keep it, it growing and it's become an attraction, which is one of our goals.
Yep, I agree. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Well, thanks again and, and I couldn't agree more with Selectwoman Beland, her budget committee has always been near and dear to both of our hearts and I thought this year's committee did a very vigorous job in asking some really tough questions and there was some really good interaction and really good discussion and thank you for chairing it.
You bet.
All right. Moving on to regular business, we, we have an email from our assessor about concerning the veterans credit. I had a conversation with Mr. Dean today. For now, this is sort of informational for us. He needs to contact legal counsel to determine whether or not this needs to go on the warrant or whether or not the board has authority. So this is more of a heads-up for us right now and Mr. Dean will follow up with counsel and get back to us and if it's a warrant article, it's a warrant article or if not, then, then the board can take it up.
Thank you, Cory.
Thanks, Cory. Madam Clerk, we have solar exemption and several veterans credits.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 51 Lot 9 in the amount of $14,500 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve a veterans credit for MAP 47 Lot 8, Unit 303 in the amount of $500 for the year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve veterans credit for MAP 68 Lot, uh, Unit Lot 6, Unit 412 in the amount of $500 for 2023.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes.
And I move to approve a disability veterans credit for MAP 68 Lot 6, Unit 412 in the amount of $2,000 for the year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next we have several memos from Deputy Fire Chief Jason Fritz, the first of which is a recommendation that the board approve the naming of a private way to Lamont Place. This is in response to some confusing numbering on Tan Lane. Recommendation is to create a new private way that will service three buildings that have associated numbering that is out of compliance. The new private way would be Lamont Place if the board approves. Any comments or questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the renaming of a new private way to Lamont Place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Similarly, Deputy Fire Chief Jason Fritz has recommended to the board that they are working to correct addressing discrepancies on Gilman Lane, which is specific to one of the new PDA housing projects that Principal Rossen spoke of earlier. There is a map attached in our packet. And Mr. Dean, I don't see where he's making a recommendation for board approval this evening.
No, my understanding of it from the historic district commission side was that there is going to be, it's more than just adjusting the numbers on Gilman Lane, there's also a spur off of that, they have to rename it to make it its own road as opposed to, you know, taking a left and a right on Gilman Lane, kind of like Park Street.
So Mr. Dean, is this more informational, this one?
Yeah, because it says.
Yes, we can wait on that.
Yeah.
Next, we have a memo from Deputy Fire Chief Jason Fritz on behalf of the E91, E911 Committee. Been working with property owners on 54 Drinkwater Road, specific to a proposed division of a lot into two separate parcels. They are looking for an approval this evening of the board to approve an application for a change of address and the application for the change of address is in our packet. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to authorize the change of address from 54 Drinkwater Road to 52 Drinkwater Road for emergency responders to easily locate the property.
So moved.
It's second.
Julie, did you?
Yeah, I, I thought we were adding to, that 54 is already there and we're adding 52 or vice versa?
No, the application is to change the address number from 54 to 52.
No, the new lot is to be defined 54.
This is the recommend, this is the change request. That's the explanation.
Okay.
Unless I read it wrong.
Well, the, what that says up here isn't what it says in the description.
Do you see under explanation?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. It's being subdivided, so one is going to be 20, 54, which already exists and one's going to be 52.
The application would need to be corrected then because that's not.
Right.
So I will withdraw my motion and we'll have to bring this up because it does.
Selectwoman.
I'll withdraw my second.
Mr. Dean, we're going to need to have this application revised.
Hey, so, so what's in the bottom of the application isn't sufficient? I was just rereading it. Is that not correct?
No, it's correct, but it's an application for a change of address from 54 Drinkwater and then the description down below says it's being subdivided and so 54 still exists and we're adding 52.
So it all makes sense, Mr. Dean, it's, the application needs to be corrected.
Okay.
It's inaccurate.
Because the new lot will now be 54.
Or, you know, one of them.
Well, that's how it's written, so.
We'll send it back and bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you. While, while you're there, we'll entertain your town manager's report.
Sure, I had a couple of things tonight. One is just to let the board know that the Siphons project is ongoing and it's an active construction site, so we like to see that. Swayze Parkway has been closed for some days just to allow for the work that needs to be done to take place in the initial borings phase of the project. Town council has checked with the probate court and we don't have anything yet on Swayze Parkway, so we're waiting for that to happen. Right now, the response from them is that it's still being processed and that means that the pleadings have not been formally entered into the court system. After that occurs, the next official step, step will be the court issuing and sending to the town an order of notice for service on the AG's office and at that time, council will be sending that order directly to Attorney Quinlan instead of having service done by the sheriff's office, as Ms. Quinlan has indicated she will accept service. So Walter Mitchell has that diary to check again with the court in two weeks and to follow up with us again at that time when he checks in again. So that's ongoing. Just a reminder for residents that because of the holiday being on a Sunday this week, trash pickup is on your regularly scheduled day, so just to reiterate that and remind people, Christmas trees are being picked up next week, so that's the, the week of January 9th, we'll have Christmas trees out on your regular trash day to be picked up. And then also this week, we'll be meeting with representatives of community power, they're coming in next week before the board to talk about the policies that go with the next community power efforts. And then on the 12th of January, I'll be meeting with the folks from the Down Easter regarding some federal grant opportunities for the train station that sound pretty exciting, so looking forward to that. Unless there are questions, that was my report for tonight.
Selectwoman Gilman has a question.
And Mr. Dean, when you're talking to the Down Easter folks, do you remember in a packet six months ago or so, we had been given a lot of information about grade crossings and quiet zones so that, you know, right now the, the train blasts from East Kingston to Newmarket because all the crossings are at grade and only the couple in Exeter are gated. Can you just ask them if that, who gave this to us and who's interested in the quiet zone and if it's something that the Down Easter is willing to, or is interested in pursuing?
That would be lovely.
Yes, I can ask and inquire of them.
Yeah, the people I run from would love that too. They asked me about that.
Mr. Dean, the date of the meeting with the. Mr. Dean, the date of the meeting with the aggregate power folks?
It has not yet been confirmed, but it is not going to be tomorrow, I don't believe. It looks like it's more likely to occur later this week.
Okay, I'll wait to hear from you, thank you.
Thank you.
Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger?
I have, so, one, I can confirm the conservation commission will be at our next meeting because Russ text, Melissa, Melissa wrote me a note, so they will be here next meeting.
Great.
And so I attended a planning board meeting on December 22nd. Classes are necessities these days. We had had a, it's case 2214, they originally came for seven lots on Beech Hill Road. After a few meetings and several conversations that are always necessary, they actually came back and reduced to three. One current, where the current house is, and it's going to be on Deer Hill, so that was approved. Also, lot line adjustment between Hillside Ave. 6 and 8, literally, it, there was this weird little jut out that never should have been there, it's an older thing, so that's fixed. And then we have, and it was more of a pre-conversation, Hampshire Development Corporation for minor site plan review for downtown on Water Street, they want to add a few apartments and some parking, but there'll be an issue with the town right of way, so that will be coming to us at some point. 173, 179 Water Street, it's out back. It was great conversation, there was the Butters, there were some issues, they were encouraged to go sit down and try to work those issues out. And finally, I was, I don't have my memo I sent to Nico on this, but I wanted to give everyone the heads up. Gwen English reached out to me, Helpsy, they come and pick up all kinds of stuff. I don't have all of my information with me because I didn't anticipate speaking about this, but I received an email from Jordan from Helpsy. I had a conversation with her just before the holidays, and they are willing to come via Zoom to talk to us at our January 30th meeting. She did ask that I bring it up and ask if there's any specific questions so that they could be prepared for different outreach programs. They're a very sustainability-focused company, so they, she had some wonderful ideas, and should I forward my email, my summary, to everyone? As long as no one replies back, we're okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Just so you have a general idea. But what had happened was Gwen had, was expecting a home pickup, and they didn't come because we're not hitting our targets. And they come from Ubin, and they, they are looking for, I think my memo to you said 20 maybe, but, and she came back to me the other day and said that they reduced that down to 16. So whether we want to consider bins, if we have any public events, ways that they would come and do a clothing drive with a truck, things like that. So if anyone could, we have Helpsy information on our website, so if you guys could look at it, maybe reach out to me and let me know of any specific questions you might have so that they can prepare.
So Helpsy is the textile recycling program that Jennifer started probably about a year ago, Jennifer Perry gave a presentation to the board. And the beauty of this is, not only is it a great sustainability initiative, but the town actually makes money from it, so it's a, it's really-
Win-win.
And there is information on the town website. I have seen folks on social media inquiring about it, and I know when I've seen that, I've reached out to them privately and sent them the link that, but I think, you know, with Jennifer having retired, maybe that has slipped between the cracks, but I think having, having her available on the 30th to take any questions, obviously, to advertise this again, it's a wonderful program, and again, it's a win-win from a sustainability-
Yeah, we have one bin in town, and it's at Riverwood, so-
So.
There is a link to the, to schedule a Helpsy-
Yes.
That's where the problem came up. They, they weren't coming because we weren't having enough people calling for the pickups.
No, I understand, so if we want to get some more, I'm telling people this is-
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure I said that.
So we'll broadcast that live and loud on the 30th, once it comes to meet with us via Zoom. Selectwoman Gilman?
I had no, nothing. I had a vacation, like the schools did, but this, this month, we have, just the historic district commission is going to have a very brief meeting, I think, to discuss changes to the cell facilities on the Major Blake Hotel on the corner front and Court Street. And then on Thursday, the, let's see, I almost got the initials in the wrong places, but the Electric Aggregation Committee is having a Zoom presentation and materials to help us communicate and amplify what the program is going to do, and this is how it's going to work over the next few months.
Great.
Mr. Chair, can you add this to yours, just in case you didn't have it on your list?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we expect them back on the 9th, next Monday.
Yes.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Nope, nothing from me. I have meetings this week, but that's it.
And Selectwoman Rontriola?
Nothing for, to report, but, you know, based on just the conversation we just had about Helpsy, and I remember the presentation, and it was a really well-done presentation. I think the bigger issue is, it's the communication piece, you know, we were, we were talking to an empty room. If you look online right now, the number of people watching the meeting live is very small. It's probably my dad. So we really need to consider, what is our best communication to citizens who are within a certain age range, that are not retired, that are not available during our meeting times to absorb the information that we're sharing? And I think, as much as we want to have presentations during this timeframe, are we really tapping into the public, or are we just reeducating ourselves? And, you know, it may not sound like the, I think that's, that's the crux of the issue. I mean, I remember the presentation quite well, and I thought to myself, and I wrote it down, I was like, this is something I absolutely want to use. So it is, it's surprising at the time when people are really, you know, trying to get rid of stuff and make room for new stuff, that we weren't able as, as a town to, to get 20 people to do it. So the question is, what are we missing to, to get that info out to folks so that we're not losing opportunities like that? So we're not losing opportunities for things like Mr. Fox and, and, you know, like, all of these real, really great resources that our town provides that go untapped because...
So if I could just follow up really quickly, the memo will, will show you the conversation that I had and why we felt, I felt it was important for them to come. They're going to have some ideas of different community efforts to help get the word out. If, I don't know, I, I don't think it's a waste of time to have the conversation, so-
It's not, it's, you're, don't take it personally, it's not about-
It's not personal at all.
The presentation, it's, we have presentations to talk about getting the word out, and then we, we don't have the, the structure set in place for the appropriate way to get the word out. So if a company or a nonprofit is wanting to get the word out, how are we assisting in that? What are we doing, or what, you know, it, do we have the communications person who is putting out info for the fire, police? Is that something that's going to fall within their purview? You know, what's the structure for that? I'm thinking bigger picture rather than-
Well, I think that's a perfect example of what somebody might write.
Right, and that's, that's where I think that that kind of money is spent well.
I agree.
For streamlining it all in one central place so that citizens aren't like, well, where do we find out if it's trash day today or not because of the holiday? And then you've got 30 people misinformation, you know, and then they miss the trash day, and you're running down the street, because it's, we have it out there, but it's not centralized. And, you know, people like things, I am people, in a central location to make it super easy.
I completely agree.
Nico?
One of the things, we can talk to Bob Glackey, or Bob can direct us as to who might be a good idea to, to do this, is when somebody like Jen Perry comes and gives a presentation, why don't we take that 10-minute, that clip or presentation, put it out on Facebook or on the community forum when we think it's a community asset? So rather than having to, you know, watch the whole board meeting, maybe we can try to start creating some presentations that people can listen and say, oh, I heard about this, and I want to learn a little bit more, but they don't have to go through the whole select board meeting, and making that more easily accessible.
So YouTube, the YouTube channel, Channel 22, 98?
TikTok.
Some snippets where people can find-
Yeah, TikTok, I mean, I know that, it, TikTok seems like it's this, you know, out of this world dance thing. Most of the information, I learned how to do flooring via TikTok, like, honest to goodness, like, if you want to learn how to do things in a very short span of time, you've got a one-minute, 30-second blurb about, oh, this is how I put together, you know, laminate flooring, learned how to do it in five videos that were each about a minute and a half. Like, that's, that's the way of the population that I think is in most need of what we're trying to share. Folks at Riverwoods, they are, they are more informed than most people in town because they're at our meetings, they're at the deliberative session, they come to vote, they come fill the room. So I'm less concerned about them not knowing that, they have meetings within their smaller communities. It's the, that middle-aged group of families with younger kids who have homes, who are not getting access to all of the things that a lot of people are putting energy and time into, and it's like, that's the saddest part to me. It's not that we don't have it, it's that people are putting really good work into things that just don't get used in the way that they're supposed to.
Nancy, can I ask one more follow-up? Nico, just real quickly. So with the Helpsy, would it be easier, you know, for the first few months to designate, like, the first week of the month, so that people had like a target to aim for, being like, oh, we know Helpsy usually comes to town? Or is it as soon as they get 16 people? I can't quite remember the presentation, I apologize.
No, it's fine, and I wasn't on the board when that happened, though I did, I do remember it, but not all the specifics of it. You know, when I talked to Jordan, she had a lot of different community outreach parts. One of them was for Bob Glackey, so I would want to connect Bob with Jordan, because they have their own snippets that we could advertise on our channels and things. Trying to think of what else. One of the things she said that was successful is, you know, if we had an Earth Day event, a sustainability sponsors an Earth Day event, and they would come and have a truck there and have a drive.
Toxic Waste Day.
Yeah.
You're getting rid of your paint cans, donate your clothes, like-
Right, exactly.
Because we advertise that well.
Yeah, we have that in-
People know about it.
October, I believe, the, but, but yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I apologize, I don't have all of my notes, it was before the holidays, I summarized it. But yes, it, it's just trying to find ways that they already find themselves to be of good use to get the word out in the communities. And, and, and thank you Gwen English for pointing that out.
I did not have any meetings, but I do want to let the public know that there is a public meeting this Thursday, January 5th, from 7 to 9 at Exeter High School. Be a brief, brief presentation, and then an open house to review New Hampshire zoning update.
New Hampshire zoning update about, you know, what is, what we're talking about in Exeter to meet our master plan.
Yes, it's a way to simplify the zone, zoning districts. I forgot how many we have right now, but it's to condense it, and it's, we're looking for community feedback.
So the changes are to help implement the town's master plan, maintain limited development potential in more rural areas. Provide stability for existing residential subdivisions located between the more rural areas and the more populated areas of town. Allow for a greater variety of housing types and infill development for the residential areas closer to the center of town. Allow for vibrant walkable centers, including downtown Exeter with a mix of new and redeveloped commercial, residential, and community uses that respect Exeter's historic heritage, and to continue to allow spaces for neighborhoods serving retail and services as well as heavier commercial and light industrial warehousing uses. And for more information on the zoning update, you can visit the Exeter website under Planning Sustainability, or contact our town planner, Dave Shopples.
I think it was actually on the face, the drop page yesterday, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would have been remiss being on the-
Correspondence, we had, we were copied on a letter to the town clerk from three individuals regarding successful voting in local elections. The town manager, the town clerk, the town moderator, and I are planning to meet with these three individuals in two weeks to have a discussion, review their letter and concerns. We have a letter from Chris Ziegmond to the select board regarding the single-use plastic hearing and some concerns that he had. We were copied on a letter from the chair, a co-chairperson of the Exeter Heritage Commission, Jane Myers, to Mr. Joel Shander, who had submitted a letter to the select board several months ago. And we have an update from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation regarding sale, an update on sale of state-owned land in Exeter on Cronin Road.
Right, we don't have much time to decide if we're interested, or has that decision already been made?
This is a piece that was brought to us before, and now they've just added a small chunk on the end.
Okay.
And we gave it to the town planner for recommendation, and he said it wasn't, there was developable, and, you know.
Good, thank you.
There's nothing.
Reviewing the board calendar, we'll be back next Monday, the 9th. The budget hearing is January 17th, which is on a Tuesday, and that legal public notice has been posted, and then we'll have a regular select board meeting on January 30th. So if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A colon 32A.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Rontriola?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
The clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, moving non-public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well. content as well.